Okay, we're missing, uh, missing Pedro. We'll just wait a little bit. Jeff, you have all your staff on?
It looks like yes.
Okay, Madison, how are you? Got to see you there. Barbie, Tracy, Claire, Lisa. Nick's in the background there. We're, uh, just waiting for Mr. Moray. So, uh, let me see if I can find where he's at. Hang on.
Mayor, he's on. He's, uh, Nick is bringing him on.
Did I see that? We'll wait till your lights up. Pedro, hello? Got you on there. You're live.
Sorry, everyone.
All right. It looks like we're, uh, ready to go. So at this time, I'm gonna ask for a motion to call to order this, uh, special, um, meeting here, or this work session meeting. So we'll do it by acclamation if we can. So, uh, all in favor? You can say aye. Anybody opposed? May so, all right, we're live. Jeff, I'm gonna turn it immediately over to you so we can get going.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor, and good afternoon, everybody. Hope everybody feels refreshed from, um, from yesterday. And I will try to be more mindful today of taking a break midway through. Uh, I really had no idea that time just flew by yesterday. That was the fastest three hours, uh, that I've experienced in a long time. So, uh, Barbie will remind us around 2:30 to take a break this time. So just picking right back off where we left off yesterday, we're gonna start with talking about the Neighborhood Center zoning district. So we left off yesterday, uh, finishing up, uh, preliminary discussions about our, uh, single-family residential zoning districts in R1, R3, and R4. And we're gonna move on to, um, start moving on into our mixed-use district and then talking about some of our commercial districts. So first off, we have Neighborhood Center, NC. So this is designed to be our, I guess you could call it premier mixed-use district. And the description is Neighborhood Center allows for smaller-scale offices, neighborhood-oriented retail and services, as well as townhomes, duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes at a rate of no more than eight units per acre located on the periphery of the downtown core between the Main Street and Town Center districts and the R4 district and at strategic locations to serve surrounding suburban residential areas throughout town. NC, yes?
Is there a way that you can maximize your screen? Cause it looks a little small.
Oh, okay, huh.
No, no, can you, can you enlarge the whole thing? Like if you click the little square up next to the X?
I think that moves it that way. Is that better or worse?
No, sorry, go ahead. We're trying to, uh, see that. I think this will work out what you got now. We're just trying to make sure that we can see, uh, the participants and, uh, the screen. So I think we got it covered.
Okay, is that all right?
Jeff, you can, uh, try hitting Ctrl-L as in Larry, and that may get rid of some of the, uh, top menu stuff.
Oh, okay.
And then try to enlarge that.
Hmm. I might need some more technical support for that.
Okay, why don't you go back to the other one? Um, at least it was wider on the screen. Everybody has a, a view options on the very top of, um, their screen by a little green line that says you are viewing Jeff's screen. You can enlarge that yourself if, uh, you'd be under the view options. There's a zoom ratio.
Yeah, I did 100% and it, it makes it as tall as the screen, but there's probably other things you can do.
Oh, can everybody see this one? Okay. All right. So Neighborhood Center is intended to encourage the creation of compact and walkable mixed-use neighborhoods near the downtown core and provide an alternative to auto-oriented corridor, the auto-oriented corridor commercial district, and to promote a town-wide architectural identity. So some of the primary uses are single-family attached duplex, triplex, quadplexes, upper-story apartments, not from the ground up, cottage homes, live-work units, light retail, and general office. So the minimum, there is no minimum front setback. You can be right up against the, uh, the right-of-way there with a maximum of 20 feet. And of course, a fairly minimal side setback of five, corner lot, you'd add five feet to it, rear setback would be 15 feet. So some of the specific note features of this one shall not exceed 10,000 square feet per development without first obtaining a special use permit or conditional zoning and shall not exceed 60,000 square feet per development, and that is for non-residential uses. So what that means is that if somebody walks in the door and has a parcel that is zoned, Neighborhood Center, if it is a, well, number one, if it's a use that is a permitted use by right, and it also is less than 10,000 square feet, they can locate there as a permitted use by right. If they come in and they're proposing something that is larger than 10,000 square feet of non-residential, that automatically puts them into the special use permit or conditional zoning category, i.e. meaning they would need to get Board of Commissioner approval. Multi-family residential shall not be developed from the ground up, as I mentioned a moment ago, and may only be located on the second and third stories in the Neighborhood Center district. The attached single-family, or i.e. townhome, shall not have a minimum lot width, but the total width of each structure containing the attached single-family homes and adjacent side yards shall not be less than 60 feet. What we're saying there is that you have to have at least three townhomes in one building. So you can't have less than that. That's what that is, that's what that is saying. And then the maximum density is eight units per acre for all residential uses. And then the duplex, triplex, and quadplex shall meet 150% of the minimum lot width and depth standards. We talked about that, uh, a little bit in the R4 as well for duplexes. In the Neighborhood Center, you would add triplex or quadplex as an additional use that could be done in this zone. So how it looks on the overall map?
Yes, I'm sorry. I have a question, and I know we talked up in a non-residential uses. Just, just to give us a, an idea, something that's 10,000 square feet, is there something in town or that you could maybe point to that we know? Or what, something, a building or something would be 60,000 square feet, just to give us some sort of scale of what that, how big that would be?
Most, um, drugstores like CVS, stuff like that, kinda hover around the 10,000 square foot size. Sometimes they're, you know, eight to 12. A big one might be 15,000 square feet, but 10,000 square feet's kind of a rough, or a drugstore is kind of a rough idea of what that size would be for non-residential. 60,000 square feet. The food line behind is just the food line, not the rest of the shopping center, but the food line part, I believe, is, is in the 40,000 something square feet. So.
So by comparison, again, I know some of the stories vary, but, uh, I'm gonna guess that you've got, uh, much larger uses in the Lowe's and the Harris Teeter up there. What do you estimate those, or do you know the numbers, their numbers, just for perspective?
So the, um, I think the Walmart Neighborhood Mart is, uh, probably about, I don't know for sure, but if I had to guess, it's probably in the 30,000 square feet. So if somebody wanted to propose something like that to the Neighborhood Center, they would definitely have to come get board approval. And certainly the Lowe's, the Lowe's wouldn't even be an option in that district because it would be too big. It's, it's larger than 60,000 square feet by far.
So just to, just to, um, clarify here, so anything roughly the size of a drugstore, uh, if it's less than 10,000 square feet, could go in by right, and anything greater than that, so it was a larger type of a drugstore, it would need a special use or conditional zoning for that, something that size, and we couldn't have anything greater than maybe a food line in, in this area?
That's correct, but that's if that was a single use. Um, you know, I, you might, you might could get some kind of small-time grocer that might be interested in locating in a, in a Neighborhood Center, but I mean, you're not gonna get, you're not gonna get any of your national chains or, or anything, even closely remote to that.
Okay, thank you.
So, as we mentioned, in strategic locations, that could help to serve the surrounding suburban neighborhoods. We have a small little Neighborhood Center here, right up at the very north end of the, of our town limits, up here at Bonds Grove Church. There's just a, a few small little parcels right there. So we have one there. We have them in strategic locations along Highway 16, too. And one of the reasons in doing that is to try to break up the corridor commercial some. You know, we have that established corridor commercial area up at Cuthbertson and 16, and then another small little area that's established there where Police Department is, and then another area here that's established. And we're sitting right now with the, um, with the food line. So we did not really want to envision to have an entire corridor of all, uh, uses that would allow for big-box retail or for drive-through, uh, restaurants and things like that. So we wanted to be able to break that up some.
Are you intending to share your screen on this one?
Oh, it says I am. Am I not?
Uh, you are. I thought maybe you might be sharing the, the map. Are you just still on the Neighborhood Center text?
I am not on the text. I've got the map in front of me. Is that not what you were seeing?
Uh, it's not what I'm seeing.
No, it's just the text still. You need to switch screens.
Okay.
Or just pull it over to this, your, the screen.
It may be the same screen, but because he's got it enlarged so much.
Do you see it now? Okay.
As we pause for technical difficulties.
Select microphone. How about now?
Negative.
All right. Come help me, Nick.
Well, it's not Nick. All right, so where is? See, where's the other options to? Video. Where is the text that you were showing? Was it on the screen?
It's down there in the ADS.
And it's still, and this is still not showing up? Is it showing up now?
No.
No.
Okay, I'm trying to get to. Oh, here we go. That's not gonna do it.
You can drag the map to another screen.
Yeah, we tried that.
You have to, uh, change your, your screen sharing options.
I'm look, I'm looking for the screen control to, to change it. It's not coming up.
It's at the very bottom.
Zoom.
Where it says share screen.
Yeah, it's on some kind of view that it's not showing it.
Well, then do stop sharing screens and then reshare again, but, but select the other screen.
Oh, here it goes. Your screen is sharing as paused. Oh, the screen sharing is paused. Why is that?
Go ahead, stop sharing.
Yeah, stop share. Okay. All right, so now we'll try sharing again. Where is it? Oh, yeah. Okay, and then we just select that. How's that?
Yay, team.
Yay.
You're hired.
Thank you.
Goodness. Yeah. Well, as you can see, IT is not my field of expertise, so. But anyway, so back to the map. The northern area town here at the intersection of Bonds Grove Church Road is a small Neighborhood Center area. We've got the, the Southern Styles. You're familiar with that little business there as you go down Highway 16. We've got some other strategic areas along 16, as I was mentioning, with the idea of trying to break up the corridor commercial area so that you don't have the entire corridor that you could allow for your larger-scale, big-box-type uses and, and drive-through restaurants, things like that. That was also part of the thought process in adding Employment Center to the 16 corridor as well, just to have a diversity of use options along it. The, uh, what I call the Alma Village area, you know, this is their existing townhomes right here, and these are the parcels that are in front of, of that development. And then the parcels just to the north there that are adjacent to Kingston, that would be the proposed Neighborhood Center area. An area just between, um, just east of Highway 16 and north of Blythe Mill and south of, of Waxall Parkway East, and it'd be a buffer between the Employment Center area and some existing R4 just to the south that we discussed yesterday. The property that we own at the intersection of Kensington and Waxall Marvin to serve whatever governmental purposes that, uh, that we are looking to do there. So far, the Public Services and Parks and Recreation Operations Center. And then this is one that we added in kinda late to the process at the intersection of Pine Oak Road. And one of the reasons to do that was to provide more opportunity for a Neighborhood Center, uh, closer to Millbridge along with the one to the south here, but also to try to encourage, is that's one of our intersection improvement projects that we would like to complete, is reconfiguring that intersection. So that is another, uh, reason to encourage a little bit more, uh, to happen there, to try to expedite that along and, and get rid of that dangerous Y intersection that is there right now. And of course, we talked a lot about the, uh, the area here near Waxall Parkway West and Waxall Marvin Road yesterday, and the reasons and intentions for that being there.
Jeff?
Yes?
Quick question. Uh, the Howie Farm, what is that currently, uh, uh, coded at?
The current zoning district is R1.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And so right here at the intersection of Rehoboth and 75 is 701 Main, where a lot of us like to eat on a regular basis. We've proposed for a Neighborhood Center area, you know, right there at the entry point of town going into the downtown core, as well as the parcels that have frontage along 75 until you get to the downtown core. And then it picks up on the north side of the tracks and North Main Street here at the church for two blocks until you get to the downtown core. Also, a block south behind the downtown area, as well as providing a buffer between the Town Center and the R4 along 75. This right here is where the planned roundabout would be. We envisioned that to be a nice Neighborhood Center-type opportunity so that people could, uh, continually walk down, down, downtown. And then here is the Townhouse project here that's going on now off of, off of 75. The three parcels just to the south of that, we proposed as Neighborhood Center as well. One of the parcels we own right now, that is a, um, that's where we basically store our mulch and leaves for the time being. But then there's two other parcels there. Across the street there on the north side of the tracks is a, is a sizable Neighborhood Center parcel, but that is occupied now by White Oak Assisted Living Center. So we have, we have zoned that Neighborhood Center, which isn't allowed use in that. And then as we talked about yesterday, is the area just east of Main Street here, kind of the southern side, the south side of the east side area, I guess is what you could call it, uh, just north of the railroad tracks and along Howie Mine, Howie Mine Road. So not, not a whole lot is zoned Neighborhood Center. It's not really meant to cover an extensive area. It's, it's meant to be placed in strategic areas. Guess what I missed here is, is Prescott Village and these kinda narrow awkward pieces of property that represent Phase 2 of Prescott Village. This is, is very limited back here. You really can't do much of anything, uh, with that. And these are also limited because of their shape. So really, the only way to get anything of, of substance in there would be, uh, some type of mixed-use, uh, you know, smaller Neighborhood Center mixed-use type, type development. So that, that is the extent of the, of the Neighborhood Center. You know, again, uh, just trying to have it located in strategic areas that would give some of these subdivisions the opportunity to, um, to walk, to grab a cup of coffee or, or go to some small office that they might have there. Obviously, once we get past, hopefully, this pandemic, be more opportunity to, uh, to gather, create great spaces like that. Good place-making opportunities. That is the vision for that district. Okay. Can we see back to the text now?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So next we have the Main Street District. And this allows for the development of the traditional, uh, Main Street scale consistent with the downtown core. And we talked a little bit about this yesterday. It's, uh, a, a liberal business district, uh, is, is what it is. Allowing for storefront retail, uh, eating, drinking establishments, artisan studios. Pretty much allowing the same, uh, uses that it, uh, that it always, it always has. Um, it, it's not changing much. We are, uh, you know, adding the opportunity for upper-story apartments. That actually gets it back to what it was in its original, uh, day. You know, 100 years ago, uh, people did live up in these, uh, upper-story areas back then. So we're looking to, uh, bring back that opportunity that it was historically. And as we mentioned also yesterday, that it's in a small area that I'll show on the map. But, uh, primary uses, general retail office, restaurants, breweries, taprooms, upper-story apartments, live-work units, theater, gallery, studios, pretty much everything that you would want to have in a vibrant downtown. So dimensional requirements are, are very minimal. Uh, 25 feet is your minimum lot width. Minimum lot width, uh, depth is 80. There's no maximum density and 100% lot coverage, which you would expect in a downtown more often than, than not. There's, uh, no setback requirements off of the right-of-way and the front, and just a small setback requirement in the rear, and zero setbacks on the side, which is what you would expect in a, um, in a downtown area with maximum building height of three stories. And as we mentioned before, residential units should not be developed from the ground up and may only be located on the second and third stories in the Main Street District. So, you know, I bring that up a lot, cause it's, it's important to, to say, you know, one of the main things that we got through this year-long's worth of, of public input was, uh, there, people did not like the Ardmore Apartments. Uh, and we understand that. We heard that loud and clear. So, uh, there will not be opportunities anymore in downtown for anybody to do that. And if somebody wants to do apartments downtown, they have to be on top of a retail or office-type business.
Have a question?
Yes.
So the question that I have is on here. I don't see anything. What about if somebody wanted to do a parking deck or a parking structure?
Parking structure would be a government facility. Uh, we have it at, um, as in a, in the permitted use table, too, if somebody wanted to do a private one.
That's, oh, off-street.
Off-street parking?
Yep, 180.
That's off-street parking facilities. That's, um, that's not parking garage. Automobile parking garage. Somebody wanted to do one privately, it would be a special use permit in Main Street, Town Center, Neighborhood Center, corridor commercial, or Employment Center, where it could be part of a conditional zoning request.
I just figured I'd put that.
Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome. So of course, back to, um, back to this zoning map here. The area is meant to be small and compact. And as I mentioned before, we did add the block behind there, which we can drill down a little bit more into that. A quick side note to really thank Max for putting together this handy-dandy map. He's not on the call, but he did a great job in putting this GIS map together that, uh, shows this on the aerial photos. But you see here, the north side, the downtown core, then it also covers the block behind there. Landmarks here, that's the church. This is the, um, taproom here in Stuart's Gallery. And that's where the farmer's market used to be, um, there. Now that, of course, they've relocated. And then the block just east there at the, um, intersection of Howie Mine and 16. You know, this is the parking lot there that, uh, that I use most mornings to go get my coffee right across the street here at Crossroads and, uh, the property behind there. So this is the downtown core, the MS District here off to the south. This is the Women's Club Building here. Maxwell's, Mona, all of those businesses through here, the candle shop right here. And then that's where the Greek Restaurant, uh, still is, but, uh, I guess, obviously, not open right now. Um, all the way over here to the, um, to the gas station. So we're, you know, looking to try to, uh, over time in the future, encourage that to be another block of downtown. So that's, that's the idea.
Jeff, could you, uh, just pan up a little bit? Right where the purple meets the, uh, the gray-out area? The Main Street.
Right here?
Right. Well, it, all right, if you could just pan. Well, it, all right, if you could just pan out. Perfect, uh, along sixteen, uh. Wow, is there a reason why we didn't extend that right there to there? The Main Street.
Main Street.
Right.
We actually had these parcels on either side here, if that's what you're referring to. We had those zone Main Street originally. But we, we switched those to, to Town Center. You know, there's really no. Philosophical reason as to why we did that to be against it, but we just really liked the symmetry and the tight compactness. Of that core that we had, um.
I think what also entered into that conversation was the location of the Ardmore. Uh, you know, like it or not, it has a, it has a very strong influence on the character of the surroundings. And so we felt that that was kind of the dividing line.
That was the riding factor.
Yeah.
So you're still gonna be able to have commercial development up sixteen though, correct?
Oh, yes, yes. So we'll dive right into, um, to Town Center next and what that is. Town Center allows for the development of larger scale mixed use buildings that accommodate retail, services, offices. Artisan studios, light manufacturing workshops, landmark civic institutional uses and upper story apartments. Town Center is intended to encourage an active urban core that provides employment, access to daily needs. Entertainment and housing that complements the design and scale of the historic downtown. So. The lot widths here, minimums fifty feet, minimum lot depth is eighty. No maximum density, hundred percent lot coverage. So we have between the zero to ten minimum, maximum for front setbacks. A fifteen foot rear setback and zero side setbacks. And then three story height minimum, your primary uses would be general retail, general office, medical. Restaurants, light manufacturing, upper story apartments, and of course, government facilities. The notes here again, residential shall not be developed from the ground up and may only be located on the second and third stories. And there shall be no maximum residential density in the, uh, in the TC District. Residential uses shall have a private parking area. With the appropriate parking space unit per ratio. Back to. The overall map here to show you where that is, and it's really in a limited area too. It's just right in the downtown core area here. It's located within. This blue circle that we have identified as the downtown center. We were very, very keen to make sure that it stayed within that, within that circle.
I have a quick question for you, Jeff, just for clarification. As you see on the map that we're looking at right now. What I think I'm looking at is the Ardmore site. You've got that as an employment center?
Yes, that's correct. The reason why we have that as employment center, because if we zoned it anything else, it would be automatically non-conforming. And we didn't want to do that. That's the only district where you can have apartments from the ground up. So that's why we put employment center on that.
Fair enough.
So Town Center, it's the area just to the north of Ardmore here. And of course, along Highway sixteen and then the Mill, uh, Mill on Main area. And those are the two areas of Town Center and that's it. So drilling down into that a little bit more. I know that pink and that purple doesn't show up too differently, but so it's the frontage here along sixteen. That's that parcel that, that everybody sees that Ardmore is behind. These parcels right here just to the south. Of them, that's the laundromat right there. These are our two buildings, the Town Annex Building, Parks and Rec. And then the new, um, the new podiatrist that is located just to the north there. The parcels that are just east there on the other side of sixteen. The ones that have frontage along Highway sixteen, now that's the bank. And then the other, uh, little retail spaces that are there. And going back up to the intersection of Blythe Mill right here. And then just beyond that here. The two vacant parcels that are just north of Blythe Mill that. Tie back in here to where the Mavis Tire is. If you head south here. I just call this really for the most part, the Mill on Main area. You know, it's right here is the, the primary. Structure of that as well as. All of your businesses here that front that. So the idea. The idea is to, you know, have a good bit of business commerce, light manufacturing, employment opportunities. Just outside of the downtown core, uh, but within the downtown economic center area.
Uh, question, Jeff. Um, so why would the mill not need to be? Employment center? Because aren't those considered ground up apartments?
They are, and that's where things get tricky. And that's sometimes where, um. You know, you have some problems in trying to make everything that you do conforming, but there are businesses in there. And so that's why we decided to do that as Town. Town Center. So, but we have thought about that and we actually. You know, we could do that as employment center as well and, uh. We might just have to make a couple of adjustments to the, uh, to the businesses there if we did that, but that's. That's, uh, something that, that we've thought a lot about. Next, we have the corridor commercial, and this is just as it, uh. Just as it sounds, it's, uh, it's your retail area. Uh, really, it's the most liberal. Commercial district that we have. It's, it's designed for, uh, auto oriented retail service centers. Things that you would expect to service the population along the Highway sixteen corridor. Uh, it's really designed to serve the daily needs of the town citizens. Uh, you'll see when we get to the table permitted uses, it's the only district where you allow for drive through restaurants, for example. It's the only district where you have big box retail. The primary uses, general retail, shopping centers, general offices, restaurants with drive through. Automotive uses, medical offices. Minimum lot width is a hundred feet, minimum lot depth is a hundred feet. So we're wanting to encourage a little bit larger. Uh, tracts of land along the corridor there, eighty percent maximum lot coverage. Twenty foot front setback, twenty foot rear setback, ten on the side. Fifteen on the corner side, and then a three story maximum building height. The only note is to see chapter four for the corridor overlay district standards, which we'll get to, uh, here shortly.
Have a question. Go back to that, Jeff.
So, so Jeff, when I was reading through this, when you go into the district description. It's, it's kind of, it's in that first sentence where it says, "Commercial corridor zoning allows for the development of auto oriented retail and service centers." And my, my question is, should we really be leading that paragraph off citing auto development? Wouldn't it be better if you go down to where it says, "Commercial corridor provides location for retail services that meet the daily needs of citizens?" I think that that should be more at the top of that description and then bury or put the auto service centers down more in the body of that paragraph. Why just?
And I hear you. I, I, um, and I, I can understand the, you know, what we want to emphasize and don't emphasize. In the character of the town, but what makes corridor commercial distinctive from our other commercial areas is the fact that it's auto oriented. And that is probably one of its most dominant descriptive terms you could use for how this land is developed.
We're talking about auto oriented in relatively to how you get there.
Right.
And not necessarily saying we're gonna have a new used car dealership on the corner.
Well, and, and for me, when I read that, that's what I thought. We're gonna put all these automotive commercial type things as opposed to, uh. How you act, how you would access it, exactly to your point.
Okay, I, I see that, yeah, I, I can see how that could be easily misconstrued. And we, we could work on that wording just to, to, uh, indicate more that it's auto oriented land use. For the retail.
Land use, again, to me, that verbiage would say, well, we're gonna have all these auto dealerships and gas stations.
Okay, yeah, I see what you mean. All right, well, we can work on the wording to, to take out that, that, um, you know, the. That idea from it. Uh, I think we could come up with a better way to word that. I see, I see your point.
Okay, Pedro, you had your hand up a minute. Did you get your comment in?
I, I did. I, I was, I chimed in with, uh, Ann said about the gas stations. That's the first thing I thought.
Thank you.
Good feedback. Thank you. So back to the map here. Just as stated, it's along Highway sixteen primarily and not much anywhere else except for a couple of exceptions. But it starts pretty much here just north of the intersection of Cuthbertson and Kensington, which is here. So this is the, um, this is the Lowe's parcel here, just north of that is what's called Carrington Square. That's where the Bojangles and the Aldies, Aldi is. So then we traverse. South here, this is the Harris Teeter parcel here. This is the parcel that we still own here. And right here is Prescott Village. And then the two parcels to the east of that, uh, this was the South Creek, uh, development that was approved last year. And then this is a tract of land called the Deal Property that has been available for some time. Then we have the area around the, uh, the Police Department and the medical offices right here. Across there is our, uh, our, uh, boat storage area. And a couple of other small businesses as well. And then coming on down to right around the area that we are. Located right here, you know, that, this is that office area that's, that's tucked away. Behind the frontage there where Wax saw Eye Care is and some other, uh, the Subway, other uses like that. This is the food line, shopping area, of course, where we're sitting right now, or some of us are sitting here now anyway. The, uh, front area of the Wax Saw Parkway going west and east. That would be zone corridor commercial. This is where the, um, the Dollar General is, the post office. And, um, over here is the Mavis Tire to the south. The drugstore just to the north of there. The other area where it is is right off of Wax Saw Marvin Road. Where we have that small little cluster of business uses there that include that, uh, animal, animal kennel. And the athletic barn and then the, um, the, uh, small time industrial equipment rental. You go rent you your, your lift there or some other equipment like that. We have that area zoned corridor commercial. And then there are no areas. South of the tracks that are zoned for, um, for that purpose.
Jeff?
Drill down into that a little bit more here, yes.
So here's a question I have for the commercial quarter, and I know under neighborhood center, we have, um. Square feet restrictions. Is there anything in the commercial quarters? I think in our current zoning, we have twenty-five thousand square foot restriction or thirty thousand square foot restriction.
There is. Commercial development under ten thousand square feet is a permitted use by right in the corridor commercial. Commercial development ten thousand to sixty thousand square feet. You know, we mentioned that's a special use in neighborhood center. It's a permitted use in corridor commercial. Any commercial development that is sixty thousand square feet and above. Will require special use or conditional zoning. In the corridor commercial, and I guess I forgot to mention this earlier, also in the Town Center or Main Street District. So. Any commercial development that has more square footage than sixty thousand square feet will require board approval. So that's an important point to make.
Well, here's a question, just for consistency. Is that something that we can maybe add under the note section? So it's, it's congruent with the neighborhood center, put it under the commercial quarter?
Yeah, we're happy to do that.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I'll take care of that.
So, and we were very, you know, we were very mindful when we wrote the standards that way, that, uh, we would, we would expect. That, um, that. Any board would want to see any of the large scale type development requests that, that would want to locate in town. So that's why we chose, chose those numbers. So as I mentioned here, and you can't see it with the aerial, cause it didn't exist yet, but this is the Carrington Square. Area here that's got, um, the Aldi right here, Bojangles, Everbrook Academy, and then that other leasable space that's going up right now. This is an area just across the street there that, uh, it's just a house right now that we have proposed for that zoning. This is the Lowe's. Walmart Neighborhood Center. The other leasable spaces, that's a dentist right now. Gas station and McDonald's. That's the drugstore there and Taco Bell. Bank and church. Harris Teeter shopping area right here. Curzon Shopping Area. This is our town owned property and the YMCA property. Right here was the, uh, South Creek proposed development that was approved last year, as I mentioned before. This is what's referred to as the Deal Property. It's, um. It's the big sign you see across from Prescott Village that says Moody Holdings, that land available. And of course, Prescott Village here to the west, the existing parcels, uh, there. I have, um, the equipment out there now for the Sam's Mart. They are getting started on their development. And then yesterday, Arby's had their pre-construction meeting. So that one's about to, uh, start out there as well. And moving further south, as I mentioned before, this is the Police Department, uh, commercial area. And this is the medical building that faces the Police Department here. Couple of the, uh, properties that are just north of there. And then this is the, um, the boat. Storage area. Just kind of interesting. I'd always wonder how that happened there, but that's a kind of a side note, but, um, and then some of the other. Smaller businesses there, just south there. That's the, uh, the Fat Man Plumbing is right there. And then this is to the south here, coming closer to the town hall area. These are just kind of your typical. Leasable commercial space areas and office space. Back here is that office suite area that some of you are probably familiar with, but surprisingly, there are still a lot of people that don't know that that exists back there. But it does. And this is where the Subway is, Asian Grill, Wax Saw. And this is where the Subway is, Asian Grill, Waxaw Eye is right there. Then you continue on down here. This is a, um, a daycare facility here. State Employees Credit Union. This is the fire station that's behind the, um, the Food Lion area, of course, Town Hall. It's right here. And then, of course, everything across the street, the Ace Hardware. Uh, this is, um, Hen Automotive right here. This is the drugstore and then the other retail space that's behind it. Maven Tire. This is the, um, the post office here and Dollar General is right here. That's Hook Automotive right there. And so continuing on to where Waxaw Parkway starts to curve down, starts to gently make that curve down into the, um, into a residential area. And the last spot is right here off of Waxaw Marvin Road. So this is the industrial, uh, equipment right here. And the athletic barn and then the animal, the animal shelter, animal kennel is right here. So that is what encompasses your corridor commercial area. And next we have Employment Center. So Employment Center zoning allows for the development of larger scale businesses to drive employment and economic opportunities, including a variety of industries and uses that have limited impacts on surrounding areas such as office parks, light or high-tech industrial campuses and warehousing or distribution facilities. Employment Center is intended to provide for high-quality jobs that have managed impacts in areas that are well-connected to current and future, future regional transportation routes. Primary uses we're looking for here are high-tech manufacturing, light industrial, research and development, warehousing, distribution, office parks, commercial kitchens. And the distribution is, is something I'll touch on, uh, for a moment. That's very interesting. You really wouldn't have thought that there would be a whole lot of interest in that use here. You kind of think of that as being more, uh, needed up by the interstates, four eighty-five, where they historically have been. But, uh, what we found is the market is changing and it's changing, uh, pretty darn fast into, uh, what they call last mile distribution. So if you want to familiarize yourself with that, you know, Google that. And, uh, more and more as, uh, a lot of us that live in, in the subdivisions around here see those, uh, Amazon trucks and the FedEx trucks and the UPS trucks that are pretty much all going around our neighborhoods. Morning, noon and night. Uh, there is more, uh, they look to bring smaller distribution centers that are located closer to their end users. And so that's becoming, uh, a thing now. And how the market seems to be, uh, adjusting to the tide. So that's something that appears to, uh, that we might get more interest in, in the, um, in the near future. So lot width, hundred feet, lot depth is a hundred feet. Maximum lot coverage is seventy-five percent with the front setback forty feet. So a little bit, uh, bigger setbacks here as you would expect. Minimum rear setback is thirty, side is fifteen. Building height is six-story. So it's the only, uh, district that allows for anything, uh, higher than three stories. And of course, that would be to, uh, you encourage, uh, height. Uh, if we did get some kind of corporate offices or something like that, to have the, um, the ability to accommodate, to accommodate that. So this is the, the part, uh, to point out where this is the only district where you would allow for ground up apartments. This is the, um, this is the spot. So it would also allow for single family attached as well, i.e. townhouses. So how that looks on the map. As we've talked about, these are these larger tracts of land under, for the most part, single ownership. Not a lot of land assembly required. We have a large area of this off of Waxaw Parkway. And then another large area here east along seventy-five, this is the Pittinger Tract. So we're trying to look at areas that have large parcels that where it would make sense and be located off of future transportation routes. Uh, that would not significantly have a, a big impact on, um, on residential either from their locations. And then try to encourage Waxaw Parkway to get, uh, constructed through that area. You know, through, uh, economic development opportunities. So that's the, um, that's the idea. Another area that we thought it might work well is back up here on the north. Uh, look, these are some larger pieces of property. Uh, this is the hospital site right here for reference. So the area just north of that, uh, at, uh, the intersection of Gray Byram. Uh, we thought that could make a nice, uh, Employment Center area, uh, just because of the large parcels there. But also as a way to, uh, break up and provide some variety of uses along Highway sixteen. Again, not just having the, uh, the corridor commercial and retail that, that fronts the entire corridor, having a, a nice breakup of that, uh, along, along the corridor. So aerial photo wise, a hospital, as I mentioned here, and I know they've got this area to the south that they've always had, um, in reserve to be able to, uh, do future development there. The two parcels on either side of sixteen here that are, um, between two suburban subdivisions there, but have great access to NC sixteen and Gray Byram. This property here. Continuation behind here. This little straggler here, these are where you kind of have the difficult decisions to make. You know, what do you do with something like this? And this, uh, is behind this utility area that's part of the, um, the Lowe's Shopping Center. And we thought, well, what is the likelihood of anything commercial, i.e. retail going that far back is, is probably minimal? So what should we do with that? We, uh, thought that, uh, maybe some type of employment use might, might work best back there. So that's why we put that, uh, on that parcel. And then again, this large area here. Employment Center. And the reason why we did that is to try to encourage as much of that to be employment as possible. You know, we're not brokers, you know, we're not, we're not really trying to be brokers. And of course, if somebody wanted to come with some type of conditional zoning request and master plan that area, I think that would be great with a mix, mix there. Uh, but we, we wanted to provide that opportunity first and foremost to be Employment Center and not necessarily give it any type of residential entitlement.
Jeff, it might be good to point out that, um, any other type of use besides, uh, employment requires, um, a special use permit. And that's in order to give the board opportunity to consider, uh, okay, if we're not getting our first choice there of an employment center, is it worth it to allow another use to go in there or how much of another use to go in there? Because we don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot by allowing just the first thing that comes along. Even if, even if that use is permitted, ultimately, we want to weigh that decision very carefully before we give up on the idea of, uh, certain area within the purple as being Employment Center.
And Blair's exactly right. And, and that's why we have the, um, the multi-family and single family attached as special uses. Uh, so that they would require additional board review and have to get approval from the board. And, uh, we are discouraging those, uh, particularly early on until we do get some established employment in there. And, you know, if the market will really dictate when that, uh, when that happens. Ideally, it would be sooner rather than later, but honestly, we don't know. It could be, it could be later. But in our mind, it's better to, uh, to, to preserve that land for that use uh, on the front end and, uh, see how the market forms so that we make sure we do get those. And at least a good bit of that area as Employment Center as we move on.
Jeff, I have a question. Um, up where the hospital is and then there's that small, I think it's about a, um, twelve acre plot next to that, that's, it's, uh, commercial. That's in between the hospital and then neighborhood there. Yeah, that one right there. Um, why did you go with commercial there instead of something like neighborhood center? Um, I'm a little bit concerned about a transition there um, between the Employment Center and a neighborhood being commercial. It seems like maybe doing something similar to what we did on, um, Southern Styles that doesn't allow for some of those commercial uses.
Well, that's a great suggestion, Tracy. Um, we can do that. No, we, um, we wanted to provide every opportunity to have Neighborhood Center zoning where we thought it would be prudent. And, you know, we were trying to limit the spots of that, but I love the Neighborhood Center zoning district. And if y'all want more, we're happy to oblige. So, um, I think that's a fine suggestion. We're happy to do that.
Okay, that, I mean, to me, that, that works better. I think if I were to live in a, what is that neighborhood next? So it's R three, you know, I would rather have something Neighborhood Center than a gas station or fast food or something that could go there. So that would be my opinion. And then, um, one other question that I hadn't noticed before on ski trail that you put as Neighborhood Center. How does that work when it's a neighborhood with several landowners that have large acreage lots and small farms in there? Um, so if, so if one per house in there decides to sell and that can become Neighborhood Center, it kind of changes the whole atmosphere of that neighborhood. I mean, did you get input from all those homeowners or how did you choose that?
Well, as I mentioned before, we chose that because we wanted to break up the commercial monotony there. And since it had this close proximity to sixteen, this, all of this land is being marketed now by the same, um, group. So they're looking to assemble all this for future, future development there on this side, on the north side of the road. And I think some of these on the south side, south side as well. So, you know, we got, we got in the public input process and particularly from the people that, uh, are represented through here, that feedback. And we actually have some folks that have looked at it really beyond, uh, Neighborhood Center and a, and a corridor commercial, looked at master planning that whole site together. Uh, which to me, I think would be ideal if they were, uh, willing, willing to do that, which it sounds like they, uh, they are. Ideally, you'd want to encourage, I don't really know how all of these lots got subdivided here into these small lots. You would, you would want to encourage that to be assembled all together into, uh, into one type development, which is what they are trying to do out there, uh, right now. So that you would not have that fractured development of each individual lot. And so that's another reason why we encourage that under Neighborhood Center is to, number one, is to promote that land assembly there. But then also provide, uh, a, a little bit different type of land uses and opportunity than just your auto-oriented corridor commercial district. So just to make sure, let's go back up here. These two parcels here, is that correct, Tracy?
Yes.
Okay.
So Jess, what, what's the current zoning in those two parcels?
The current zoning was kind of interesting up there. It's a mix. One of them is corridor commercial and the other one is R, I believe it's R one of all things.
So my question, because if I look at Neighborhood Center, corridor commercial, you wouldn't be able to put any sort of, any more housing or anything on there. Is that correct?
You cannot put housing on corridor commercial. That's correct.
But a Neighborhood Center, they could put cottage homes, duplexes, triplexes, uh, um, not apartments, townhomes?
They could.
So really the big distinction, if we were to change it from commercial to Neighborhood Centers, they could use it more as a residential use than commercial?
Well, they would have commercial options, but, uh, just not at the same scale as they would as corridor commercial. But it would add, honestly, it would actually give them more opportunity to develop it out. They'd have residential options there too. You know, I think it's a good suggestion by Tracy, honestly, and provide a, um, a, a, a good transition between those areas.
I think so too. I mean, my only concern was if they would put some townhouses or just put more residents on that particular corner. I mean, I think if it was something with maybe, uh, retail or something on the bottom with apartments or living arrangements on the second floor, I think would be good.
Yeah, and also the Neighborhood Centers, uh, are a good companion to the Employment Centers. Because when you think about the kinds of uses that can, they can have in there, uh, it, it would cater well to, uh, people who are working during the day and are, and are located there. They have a place to go, uh, that they can walk to, maybe to, to grab lunch or, or, you know, other uses that they may need during their workday. So you have the, the working day people who are able to go there and, in the daytime. And then you have the residences at night. It's just a generally, uh, good combination.
But a great suggestion. So it, it, it sounds like we'll move to make that change then.
Yep, and so talking about that parcel specifically, it was one of our notorious conditional use C three zoning districts.
Ah, and since Madison went here yesterday, he, we haven't even gotten into the notorious conditional use districts yet, but, uh, we will. In fact, right now. So, um, when we drop down our seventeen zoning districts to, to eight, the primary goal there was simplifying everything. Uh, but we also understand that particularly with some of your larger tracts of land that people may want to not have necessarily a singular type, uh, land use on there. They would want to have more opportunities outside of just the Neighborhood Center to, uh, mix uses on the site. So what we created is what we're calling a conditional zoning mixed use district. And what it does is it allows flexibility in layout and design of larger parcels. There, that are of significant public interest and that's due to the location, economic, environmental or cultural characteristics or conditions of the area. All uses in the other districts may be developed in this district. So it really, all the, the dimensional standards and stuff from the base zoning districts would pertain. It requires an approval by the Waxaw Board of Commissioners. It's a conditional zoning approval. So they can be requested by the applicant with consent of the owner. It cannot be a proposed zoning district by town administration. The minimum acreage is twenty-five acres. So this minimum shall be waived if, if the application would increase in area of pre-existing. So if somebody came and got a, um, a conditional zoning mixed use for say a thirty-five acre area and then at some point down the line, they wanted to add ten more acres to it, you would be allowed to do that. So the mix of residential and non-residential in these. So a minimum of twenty percent and a maximum of sixty percent non-residential uses. So these could be waived if a project is found to be providing a significant economic benefit as determined by the zoning administrator. And again, we're trying to allow for And again, we're trying to allow for flexibility in the arrangement of a project, really just a master planned area. So for instance, if you had somebody that came in and wanted to develop, well, let's go big. Say they wanted to develop the, uh, the Pittenger tract and wanted to try to master plan the entire 1,200 acre area. The way for them to do that would be to apply for a conditional zoning mixed use, master plan the site, go through the conditional zoning process. And then of course, the board would make the decision whether to approve it or not. So, you know, for instance, you could have, you could have an employment center area up here on the north part of the property. Maybe they would include a, an area that's retail, consistent with CC over here is a possibility. Then, uh, maybe they have a mixture of townhomes and single family detached through the remainder of the site. That's the type of flexibility that that zoning would allow. And it's really only for the larger parcels, uh, that are scattered throughout town. And it gives a good opportunity for people to, that have some good vision and have some good foresight to, uh, to mix uses on, on an area and kind of do things that, that really this, um, this town and zoning has, has limited, uh, to a certain extent, uh, with the exception of in the downtown area. So it, it's really a way to, uh, to go to the next level and provide developers and the people more opportunity to be more creative as they're looking to, uh, to develop here, here in town.
Jeff, quick, um, quick comment, just want to make sure everybody understands the terminology, the MPCs or the, the master plan communities. You want, uh, let me ask, I guess generally ask the question, does everybody understand what that is? Okay, so I just want to make sure, master plans are like Millbridge, Lawson. They can be bigger, Sun City is a master plan, that kind of stuff up there. So just to make sure.
Yeah, and but, you know, this would be encouraging a mix of uses on the site too. So, but yeah, it'd be a, a master plan, uh, area that would allow for, uh, the plethora of uses between the scale of non-residential and residential uses. And that is our base zoning districts. That's it. But of course, with the base zoning districts, you also have the ability still to do conditional zoning districts. So this is where we get into the whole conditional zoning and conditional use zoning and all that good stuff that, uh, the, the state law is, is I think rightly trying to eliminate the confusion. And there is a lot of confusion on what is what. And they are removing the opportunity of doing conditional use zoning and conditional use permits and why that affects the town is if you look at our existing zoning map now, everywhere where there are dots, there is a lot of that. A whole lot of conditional use zoning. Over 50% of the town, I would guess, has some type of conditional use zoning on it. Some of that has been vested and completed or in the process of being completed, like, uh, Millbridge. Some things never were. Like, uh, you know, this commercial area off of Waxaw Parkway that we have designated now as employment center. Prescott Village was able to continue on and, and get, uh, updates to their conditional use permit because they had vested themselves, you know, they had begun work out there. So that remained vested where other projects never, uh, never got their vesting. So they had no opportunity to continue a project moving forward. But what this does is this is establishes that every single zoning district, the R1 all the way through the employment center, you can do, just like you can now, you can make any base district, you can turn it into a conditional zoning district. And then of course, it also adds the flexibility of the conditional zoning mixed use district as well for somebody that might want to do a, a larger master plan or a master plan on a larger, larger tract of land. So you have the opportunity to make rezoning requests for a base or a general rezoning. You have the opportunity to, uh, do a conditional zoning. Of course, you also have the opportunity for special use permits, which we'll talk about, uh, in a little bit as well, but no more conditional use permits and no more conditional use zoning.
And essentially, I think, as you had mentioned before, those are zones that could have potentially caused some legal issues for the town.
I think we are very lucky that they have not. Cause the way that those that have been utilized and interpreted in the past, uh, those people that, that own property there, uh, basically have no underlying use there. I mean, nothing, there's no permitted use by right in some of those tracts. So they've basically, uh, had land that they can't do anything with by, uh, by zoning law, which I, I would just say that I think we've been fortunate. So next is our overlay districts, and we have two of them. And these are actually carried over from our, uh, existing zoning code. And they are the corridor overlay district and the manufactured home overlay district. And I will quickly go back to the map first and show those off. So the corridor overlay district is along the 16 corridor from the town limits to Waxaw Parkway. And then along Waxaw Marvin Road. Then the mobile home overlay is in the same areas where it is with the existing code, here off of Utah Drive, where there are some existing structures. And then the one or two that are here off of Waxaw Marvin Road. And then the area here at the intersection of Pine Oak. We're not proposing any larger area of that. So somebody could, if they wanted to come and make a request to the, um, to the board to extend that area if they wanted to. So it does overlay the base zoning district. So what that means is like this Utah Drive area here is zoned R4. So if somebody wanted to put a single family detached house on one of those lots, they could. But they can also locate a manufactured home on one of those lots if they'd like. And they cannot do that on any of the other orange parcels in and around that are zoned R4, only within the overlay district area. So that, as it says, overlays the base zoning district and allows for that use to also be incorporated within there. So the main features of the corridor overlay district is encouraging a little bit more lot width. The minimum lot width shall be 150 feet. So lots or parcels that have access to a side street, which in turn has access to Highway 16 or Waxaw Marvin Road would be exempted from this, uh, requirement. Then we have a 20 foot wide street landscaping yard. So what we envision is to have a nice street landscape along the corridor of Highway 16 and ultimately Waxaw Marvin Road, as any parcels would, uh, continue to develop along there, as well as ensuring that we have enough right of way to accommodate the NC DOT when they come through and start acquiring right of way for the widening of 16. So they obviously are going to have a, um, a, a, a time and a process to acquire the right of way in allowing that to be widened. So anytime that we can help out there and, uh, require some additional dedication of right of way when development's going on, uh, we want to be able to help them and do that and encourage, uh, you know, cause we also don't want them, uh, anybody to locate on the corridor there. And then just a few years later, uh, they get wiped out by the need of right of way from the NC DOT.
Would you clarify on, uh, what to 431B, that last sentence in the first paragraph? No, go back down. It says, uh, "The street yard shall include trees planted at 40 to 65 feet on center and shrubs planted at a rate of 11 per tree."
Yep, so we are requiring, uh, one tree planted between 40 to 65 feet off center so that you'd have one tree planted every 40 to 65 feet. And then you have, for every tree, you're required to plant 11 shrubs along that landscaping corridor.
Okay, that's what I want to clarify.
And we do give the town engineer the ability to adjust these right of way dedication requirements to more or less than 50 feet on a case by case basis. So as we have technical reviews for any type of development, that would be along 16, for example. Uh, of course, would require a lot of coordination between the NC DOT and the town to make sure that we are getting the adequate right of way, which normally 50 feet is sufficient, but sometimes it may not. Sometimes it may be too much, so we want to have that flexibility. The manufactured home overlay district is, is verbatim from how it was written in the, um, in the UDO. So it's to provide an ability to locate manufactured homes within this area that is designated as a mobile home, manufactured home overlay district shall consist of no less than 10 contiguous lots or 120,000 square feet of unsubdivided land. It can be applied in the R1, R3, and R4 districts within our jurisdiction. As I mentioned before, it allows all uses in the underlying zoning district as well as type one manufactured homes. Other dimensional requirements of the underlying zoning district shall be complied with and in addition to following. The home is used as a single family residence. The towing apparatus, wheels, axles, and transporting lights are removed or concealed. The longest axis of the home is oriented parallel or within a 20 degree angle deflection of the lot frontage. So what that means is you'd be seeing the, the elongated part of the mobile home instead of the shorter side area of the mobile home. That's what that means. So anchored to a permanent foundation of concrete block and interior piers, continuous permanent masonry foundation wall around the lower part of it. Exterior siding of the home shall be comparable in appearance and durability to exterior sided commonly used in standard residential construction. Have the roof pitch requirements, vertical rise, one and a half to three feet for each 12 foot horizontal run. Give it some pitch, the roof, so it's not flat. Home's roof is finished with classy or better roofing material that is commonly used in standard residential construction. And have a front porch that is 32 square feet in area and has a, uh, 12 inch floor elevation.
Hey Jeff?
Yes?
I have a question about this, cause if we're talking about this, what about tiny homes? What about tiny homes that people are building on trailers or, or something like that? Or would tiny homes fit under this?
Tiny homes are their own different thing and hold that thought because that is coming up. So next, and this might be a good spot after this one to take our break after we finish up the dimensional requirements. In the, um, in the zoning district sheets, uh, we wanted to make sure that the dimensional requirements were provided there, but they also are provided in their own section. And this just depicts in one grid what the density and all of the other dimensional requirements, what they are in each of our zoning districts. So they're all right here in kind of one nice tidy table. So you can find them here or you can find them on the district, uh, district sheet. So they're in two locations and just any dandy way to compare. Yes?
I, um, I had a, not a question, but more of a comment on this grid. Was sort of like the formatting of the data in the cells. I think some of them were not centered versus how some of the data is in here. And then under MS where it says minimum lot width, you have 25 min. So I don't know if it just needs to be 25 and get rid of the min because the minimum's listed over under the requirement.
Alrighty, let's see, dimensional requirements.
If you look under the MS and you go into the lot width minimum, you'll see it will say 25 men in that cell?
Yeah, that's true. It doesn't need to say that because we've got it in parentheses there off on the left.
Well, but I think that, that needs some thought and some reworking, but I think what went behind it is, or, or what, the reason it's there is because sometimes we show maximums in there too, so it's to distinguish.
Yeah, and you know, I think I know why it's there because we did have a lot with minimum and we had a maximum, but we took out the maximum. So we probably just forgot to strike out the, we just left it at 25 and we just forgot to strike out the need, we don't need the minimum there.
Yeah.
Good call, good catch.
I have lots of little things like that. And then I, I don't know, you just might want to just make sure everything, if it's ju, you know, if the cells are centered or justified. I, I wrote something, format data in the cells, so I'm not sure if it's, there's something else in there that I caught.
Yeah, I, I tried to center justify all the cells except for the requirements on the left, which are left justified, obviously. But there could be, there could be some tweaking needed. It's, it's tough when you've got all these old numbers and slashes and exponents and things like that.
And I'm sure once you look at it, you kind of, they just all blend together after a while.
Well, I think, I think all of them are center justified. If you see one that's not, other than the requirement, uh, column on the left, let me know.
Well, writing is, is, believe it or not, the, the easier part of doing this, the, the formatting of it all is the more challenging part. And especially when you have a document where we're having to create, uh, tables through, uh, Microsoft Excel, you know, spreadsheets, and then, uh, bringing, uh, Microsoft Word, you know, word processing into it, and then putting it all into a, um, program called InDesign. And then PDFing it all into an Adobe reader. So it's, it's, um, yeah, you think sometimes can get off center and, and, um, and a little off kilter. So any of those that you see, let us know.
And I don't know, I don't know, maybe the, the row for rear, maybe they should have a little more width on that, cause I mean, I know that's a narrow, but, I mean, that's just me.
Yeah, that would make it consistent. And also the, the line at the top is missing, the black line for the, for the border with the colored ones. I don't know why, why it glitched that way, but I'll try to, I'll try again to fix that. It needs to look good, it needs to look professional.
Yeah, I mean, I'll probably, I have a few little things like that that I found along the way that I'll point out.
Absolutely, please send them in, please let us know.
All right, are we at, uh, give me a break time?
We are at give me a break time, and then we will dive into the general use regulation. So what do you say, 10 minutes?
10 minute break, back in the saddle at, uh, 20 of.
All right. All right.
Okay, I understand that, uh, Brenda had to leave for an appointment. Uh, we've got Pedro, he's still vacated there, so we'll wait a couple of minutes before we get back on, Jeff. Uh, there's Mr. Morey. And all the rest are on, on listening mode, so Jeff, you can continue on.
All right, great. Thank you, Mayor. So we're going to move on to, uh, what we call general use regulations, and this is really a, a catch-all for a lot of different things, uh, including accessory dwellings, structures, fences, food trucks, and all kinds of things, uh, things in between, so they're, um, they're alphabetized. So we'll start out with, uh, access to property. You know, what this is basically saying is that all buildings and structures should have, uh, a frontage on a public street. If, uh, for some reason they don't, they need to have at least a twenty-foot access easement to the street. There are some exceptions to that. There's three here, and there actually should be a fourth. I don't think that made it into our last-minute minute edits here, but, uh, so we've got lots within non-residential developments where properties administered by a developer or a managing association, so think Lowe's, think, uh, the neighborhood Walmart, other, um, non-residential, uh, business arrangement, arrangements like that, multifamily lots where individual lots are separated from the public street by land, under common ownership by the owners of multifamily development. And then accessory structures and accessory dwellings with access to an alley as part of an improved residential development. So we, we have a D there that would also, since we did, uh, cottage homes and things like that, to allow those to, to not necessarily front, uh, public street, but also front a, a public green, so that will be an added, uh, D section there that is not there now.
Jeff, when you get down under, when you get down to read number B, let me know, because I have a, a, a edit for you.
B on accessory dwellings?
Yes.
Okay. So I know we talked a bit about accessory dwellings yesterday, and, and so, uh, what we'll do, of course, talking about the, uh, lot, the lot coverage there, the comment from the mayor, is tomorrow, we're going to do a lot of downloading on, on these two days, and we'll talk with engineering and get their thoughts on the lot coverage and the stormwater there, and, uh, see how we can adjust that, uh, based on that comment. But we'll go over this again as we have it, as they'd be allowed pretty much in all zoning districts except the, uh, corridor, corridor commercial. And one thing I'll point out, you might wonder why they would be allowed in the employment center district? Well, I actually ran into this in my previous employer and, in, uh, Mills River, and we had a German and Swiss company that located a, um, a manufacturing use there, and they wanted to build a couple of houses on the site since it was a German and Swiss company, when they flew in from Europe to have some onsite housing that they could stay at while they were in the States. And so that's, um, not a terribly uncommon thing to have around, and so that's why that we have accessory dwellings located in the employment center zoning district. But you're only allowed one dwelling per lot. The accessory dwelling may be attached to the principal structure or detached.
So Jeff, my comment on that, should, should that be reworded? The accessory, the accessory dwelling may be attached or detached to the principal structure? Or detached? It just seemed like the syntax of that would have been be better to be attached or detached.
Okay, yeah, we can do that. That'd be fine.
Then, when, then when you get down to H, I have a question on that.
Okay. Let's read dwellings. B, so then we have, they shall be clearly incidental to the permitted principal structure, and C, D is accessory dwelling shall not exceed the height of the principal structure, and they shall not be located forward of the principal structure. F is an accessory dwelling shall be designed for year-round habitation containing self-sufficient bathroom and kitchen facilities, as we talked about yesterday. It has to be a true dwelling. The accessory dwelling shall meet the dimensional requirements for an accessory structure in the zoning district in which it is located. And then one off-street parking space must be provided. It can be
I'm sorry, Jeff, wanted to back up if you would on, uh, F. And talking about kitchen facilities, uh, a lot of these ADUs are going to be used for maybe home office. And so would we want then a full kitchen in there or not? I don't, I'm looking for something like that, what could be year-round, but without a kitchen, full kitchen, or maybe it's a, um, you know, a mini kitchen or, or a cabinet type of kitchen that has the three components built into it. So maybe we want to look at that a little bit.
I'm, I'm not sure I follow why that would be, um, uh, the option you want to pursue. What's, what's the reasoning behind that, Mayor?
I'm looking for, a lot of people are going to look to add, uh, an AD, uh, unit to have a home office in there. You know, a lot of people are going to be working from home. And I don't know that I'd want to have it required that they had to have a kitchen in it.
I think in that case, we just, uh, we'd say it's an accessory structure.
Okay, we can, and, and its uses can be defined?
Okay, not required, okay.
Yeah, I, I would say if somebody came to us and they said they wanted to have a separate building for, for a, an office type, a home office type use, we would consider that an accessory structure. Now, if they said that they wanted to, to have something to habitate in, then we would call that an accessory dwelling, and that would be the difference.
And, and I'm fine with that. I just wanted to make sure that we're not, you know, forcing them to put in a kitchen and they want to, you know, have desk space because of, of size or something like that.
Right, right. So let's see, then we have, they have
I had, I had a question back up under the dwellings under H.
Okay.
Where it says one off-street parking space and one on-street parking space. I mean, the question I had is, is that the right number?
Well, so i- if the idea is, is that an accessory dwelling, dwelling is typically for, you know, i.e. the mother-in-law suite, the granny flat, uh, for an, an additional member, then yes, I mean, it's not really designed to have another full family living in it. So that's why, that's, that's the thought process where you might have more, more parking spaces.
But what about, let's say it was a tiny house, or something to that effect, and it was a couple that was living there?
Ah, well, so tiny houses are still different, and we're, uh, still, that's a special requirement section that's got its whole set of different uses for different allowed regulations.
Or if you had a granny flat, let's say it's a granny and a grampy flat.
Ah, well, I guess if you have a grandma and a grandpa, uh, flat, then maybe we should say a minimum of one. How about that?
Yeah, that was just sort of my only question is, was that the right number, you know?
Well, let me, let me even add to that, making, making it more confusing. Grandma doesn't drive anymore. Do we want to put that parking requirement in there?
Would ADA requirements, uh, come into play?
That, that's what I was about to say, is, is it has to do with, uh, if you have a habitable space, I think you have to have some type of, of something to provide for them, so that's why it's there.
Perhaps Wouldn't it be?
Perhaps we need to put explicit, if it's the ADA requirement that we're concerned about, uh, maybe it just needs to say it must provide an ADA, you know, uh, uh, path, or whatever you call it, to, to a parking space, rather than requiring an addition, an additional parking space.
But you're gonna, you're gonna find, and, and again, this is going to be a moving target, you're gonna find that, um, you can get under the lot side or lot coverage requirement. You can have a house that might have a three-car garage, and you can put this ADU in there, and it won't affect the number, won't affect the equation, because you've got enough parking because you've got enough parking spaces, because you might have, for sake of conversation, you might have two driving residents and one non-driving resident with a three-car garage. So we should take a look at it, just want to make note.
Yeah, and that could come up in the conversation with engineering when we talk about the maximum impervious. And if we don't require an extra parking space, that might help us, you know, meet, not exceed the impervious level.
And that's what I'm worried about. Okay, thank you.
Well, so brainstorming this off the top of my head, I guess the fix would be is allowing the zoning administration administrator to determine whether an additional parking space is needed based on what's on the site. You know, if they have adequate dropway, you know, adequate side parking, anything like that. That's, that sounds like probably the adjustment there. Does that sound good?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we consider all aspects. We are living in a new world right now. And you're going to have people coming down to live. Obviously, we don't want to have 100% coverage on a residential lot. There are other considerations for that as well. But I want to make sure that we can be as flexible without giving away the store.
Okay, I think that covers that then. I think that's the revision needed there. So then moving on to accessory structures, and so that can mean a lot of different things. I mean, that could be, as we talked about, that could be the separate office space, that can be a garage, that can be a storage building, a number of different things. So they would not be allowed to be placed in any required front setback. They'd have to be a minimum of five feet from the property line. And this is stuff that's carried over from our existing UDO. "Accessory structures on corner lots shall meet the minimum dimensional requirements of the underlying zoning district," meaning they have to be more off of the street. "Accessory structures should not cover more than 30% of the lot area, and then shall not exceed the height of the principal structure." And in the neighborhood center, Main Street, Town Center, Corridor Commercial, and Employment Center zoning districts, they should be of similar building materials to the principal structure. So we're not saying that in the residential zoning districts like R1, R2, or R3, rather, R4. We know that people like to do, you know, metal buildings, metal storage buildings, things like that. We don't want to hinder or hamper anybody from doing that in a residential area. But in our commercial, more commercial, mixed-use areas, we would look to have similar building materials. For example, a lot of times you see in townhouse developments or even apartment developments, you'll have a row of storage or garage area that is off from that, and we would want that to match whatever facade that somebody would be building as part of the main part of the development. And that's one example. So then we have accessory uses. So the uses listed in column A shall be permitted by right in any of the zoning districts set forth in column B. And these uses are subject to additional restrictions as defined if they are. And so we've got accessory dwellings, as we've talked about already, athletic courts and fields in R1, R3, R4, Neighborhood Center, Corridor Commercial, and Employment Center, ATMs in our commercial and mixed-use zoning districts. We want to encourage bike-sharing stations, all zoning districts becoming more of a thing, carports in R1, R3, R4, and Neighborhood Center, residential clubhouses in all of our residential areas, including Employment Center, where we would allow for multifamily, community gardens, we'd want to encourage in all zoning districts, electric vehicle charging stations, these are becoming more of a thing in our non-residential zoning districts, detached garages in R1, R3, R4, Neighborhood Center and Employment Center, fences and walls, all zoning districts, food trucks, all zoning districts, just greenhouses that are not commercial-grade greenhouses in R1, R3, R4, Neighborhood Center. If somebody wanted to grow, say, some tomatoes in their yard and put out a greenhouse to do that, we'd allow them to do that. Home occupations in all districts but the Corridor Commercial, which is the only district that we don't allow some type of housing. ICE vending machines, these are a use that you see from time to time along corridors, and that's the only place that we would allow it here in town, would be in the Corridor Commercial zoning district. Off-street parking facilities in all zoning districts, commercial outdoor storage in Corridor Commercial and Employment Center. So, you know, a lot of what you see sometimes out in front of Lowe's, Home Depot, places like that, that like to have their grills and their wheelbarrows and things like that stored outside for retail sale. Outside sales are allowed in Corridor Commercial, in our non-residential Town Center, Main Street, Neighborhood Center, produce stands, encouraging those in our non-residential districts, recycling drop-off stations in Corridor Commercial or Employment Center, restaurants and cafeterias as an accessory use. You know, say you have some type of corporate entity that wants to locate in the Employment Center. A lot of them have their own restaurant or cafeteria within that building. A sales office, they're typical sales offices for multifamily or single-family attached, multi-tenant commercial in all zoning districts. Satellite dishes, signs, both in all zoning districts. Stables and barns in R1, R3, R4, our primary residential districts. Storage buildings in all zoning districts, swimming pools in all zoning districts, telecommunications antennas and equipment to support those towers, all zoning districts. Any other building or use incidental to the principal building or use as determined by the zoning administrator. So that's kind of a catch-all there. If we haven't thought of something and somebody wants to do that as an accessory use, then that could be determined by the zoning administrator, if that would be appropriate or not. Because.
Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, I was just, I just kind of have a quick crazy question. What exactly is outside sales?
So if somebody wanted to have, like they do sometimes out in downtown, have sales out, you know, in front, along the sidewalk, or just adjacent to the sidewalk, that is outside sales.
So would they have to be permitted to do that?
No, they would not.
Okay. I was just thinking of, I know that the produce, the produce lady, peach lady, or whatever, they were, I've heard that she had to be permitted. I didn't know if these are things that we would require permits for, so that we're not having all kinds of people selling stuff out on sidewalks. That's all I'm curious about.
Well, usually where we've made the differentiation is if it's out in front of their own business, you wouldn't have to permit them to do that. But, you know, if it is not located on their own property or adjacent to their own property, then we would. And that's where the differentiation is. So and that's like the peach lady. I'm not sure what her actual name is, but you're right, everybody knows her as the Peach Lady. And what was the question?
So two really questions. I know you talked about ICE vending machines. What about like just vending machines in general? Like, so we have the video vending machines, like the big red box, or is that addressed anywhere here?
It's not. That's a good thought, and we can add that one in. I guess technically you could say that's any other building or use incidental, but that's probably one that's common enough, we should add it in. That's a good thought.
Or should we just take off the word ICE and just make it vending machines? That would cover ICE vending machines as well, wouldn't it?
I kind of like having ICE vending machines in there on its own.
And then the other one I had was, what about solar panels?
So solar panels, yes, that, well, yes, we could add that one in there too. And we actually have it in a couple of different spots in the ordinance that discusses that. But that's not a bad thing to add here, as long as it's not a solar farm, which is a whole different animal.
Well, I did see solar farms addressed elsewhere, but let's say a resident wants to put a solar panel in, and they can't put it on their house, and they want to put a standalone solar panel or panels to, for either for their, you know, for, in my case, I have a pool. Maybe I want to put solar panel in to heat my pool water. Or if they want to put it in, but they can't attach it to their roof for their dwelling, it would be standalone.
Yep, we can do that. I mean, I would consider that to be in any other use or building incidental, but we can go ahead and add it in there. I mean, if somebody wanted to do something like that on their property, we definitely would not want to discourage that. We would want to encourage that.
And I'm not really sure, like legally, if we could, because I know when I was on the HOA, like we couldn't really legally tell them, they couldn't put a satellite dish, because we can't prohibit them from receiving like their signal and things. So I'm not sure if those types of laws still would pertain to like solar or not.
Well, you bring up a good point when we're talking about all this stuff. I mean, these are things that the town may allow, but not all HOAs do. And where some of them require just getting, well, like in Millbridge, we have to fill out an architectural review form and get approved for a satellite dish. So some of these things would be subject to your HOA review, which may or may not allow for solar panels.
Correct, but I know like you cannot, like on an HOA, you can't deny someone access to like utilities such as like a satellite dish. Like you, they can still go through the process, but if it's denied, they would have legal recourse. And I'm not sure if solar falls under that as well.
I don't know about solar, but with satellite dishes, yes, I know that as one example. But I think we're happy to add solar panels in here as another. Okay, and then we get into fences. Fences and walls for screening dumpsters. So we have a few things that we want to make sure that they are and that they are used for screening and have a minimum of six feet in height. The maximum is eight feet. I mean, you want to have them screened, but you don't want them looking like some giant fortress. So that's the idea there, unless the height of the dumpster warrants the need for additional height. So that would be some dumpster, but we wanted to have that flexibility in case that came up. We want to make sure that the fencing is opaque, so you can't see through it. And we want to make sure that they are of quality materials such as brick, stone, metal, or wood. No barbed razor or other similar type wire can be attached to the fence. And a landscape buffer may be used for screening in lieu of a fence or a wall. Specific screening plan for the dumpster must be submitted to the zoning administrator and approved prior to construction. And we have fences and walls for residential uses. So fences and walls may be located on the property line or in any portion of the required setbacks under the following conditions. In your front yard, fence is no greater than four feet in height. If located in the side or rear yard, fence or wall shall be no greater than eight feet in height. We strongly encourage people to place their fence in a manner that the property owner has the ability to perform maintenance on the fence or wall without requiring access to an adjacent piece of property. It happens a lot where people just put their fence up to their property line, and it happens seven or eight out of 10, 10 times. But sometimes we've found over the years that some neighbors don't get along very well and don't like their neighbor coming on the outside of their fence and into their property to maintain it. We're not making that a requirement, but we do encourage that when people come and ask us about fences.
Jeff, I have a comment on fences, and maybe you've covered it and I didn't see it yet. There was a, there's some language in one of the documents that I read that talked about how you orient the fence panels relative to your neighbors. And if I remember right, you were required to orient the good side to the outside. And you had to basically look at the framework on your side. Is that considered in here again? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes good sense, and I don't think we accounted for that, but that is a very good suggestion.
I think it is in our existing, because when I put my fence up, I did that as well.
All right.
But just, if we just go back and double-check, because there are some uses that I've seen recently that they oriented the solid panel towards the user and let the neighbor look at the frame section of the fence, which I think we should go back and make them panel the other side.
Now, that's a good suggestion. I don't think anybody wants to look at the, we'll figure out a way to make sure we will. I know the good side of the fence, we'll make sure we get the right nomenclature there, but that's a very good suggestion.
Yeah, we'll take a look at the current UDO and see how it's worded and go from there.
Thanks.
So then we've got fences and walls for non-residential uses. They may be located on the property line or in any portion of the required setbacks under the following conditions, that if located in the front yard, such fence or wall shall be no greater than four feet in height. If located in the side or rear yard, again, no greater than eight feet in height. Include basinery wood, vinyl, or combination of these materials. Chain link is allowed if coated in black, dark green, or dark brown vinyl. Barbed razor or other similar type wire attached to a fence or wall is allowed only in the side and rear yards, and only if screened from direct public view. And fences and walls for accessory uses. All poles shall be enclosed from the adjoining lots with a fence or wall. The fence or wall shall be a minimum of four feet in height and meet all current NC State regulations. So that kind of catches that additional little pitch that they're supposed to have with the door for that. Fences to enclose athletic courts and fields such as tennis and basketball court shall be no more than 12 feet in height. Chain links shall be coated in black, dark green, or dark brown vinyl. And then no barbed razor or other similar type wire would be allowed.
When we talk about these uses, Jeff, we're going to end up, I'm sure, grandfathering a lot of existing right now. We see some of the razor wire and stuff on the frontage on 16 and some applications.
Yes, that's correct. So we've got food trucks. Food trucks are allowed in all zoning districts under the following conditions. So food trucks in Corridor Commercial, Employment Center, Neighborhood Center, R1, R3, and R4, pretty much anywhere outside of our downtown core area would be permitted only on private property with the property owner's consent. Property must have an off-street parking area with a minimum of 10 parking spaces. And a minimum of five parking spaces are required for each additional food truck and mobile vendor that wishes to locate on private property. No more than three food trucks can locate on a parcel at one time. And food trucks must meet all required setbacks for the zoning district. And the property owner is responsible for containment and removal of trash and recycling from the property each business day. Now, so this would cover if food truck wanted to locate, say, here in the Food Lion Shopping Center parking lot. If we had an employment center and they wanted to come locate there at the lunch hour to serve the people that work there. And in our residential zoning districts, as we see that they come out to Millbridge, to that parking lot area quite a bit, so I'd assume they do in some other ones too, like Lawson and our other subdivisions. So I'd assume they do in some other ones too, like Lawson and our other subdivisions. Then we talk about specifically food trucks in the town center and Main Street zoning districts. It'd be allowed in the towns right of way if the food truck provides proof of general liability insurance that holds the town harmless in case of accident or injury to a patron. If located in the town right of way, food trucks must maintain a 50-foot minimum separation from other food trucks. And that's carried over language from the existing U D O. And if located on private property, must have property owner's consent and must meet all required setbacks for the zoning district. So all food trucks must apply for an administrative permit to occupy a specific location. The food truck must have proper permitting from Union County Health Department to locate in the town limits. And the administrative permit must be renewed on an annual basis. In addition, food trucks are subject to the requirements of the town code of ordinances. That's for nuisance ordinance, loud, disturbing, unnecessary noise. And we have four or more food trucks wishing to locate on a parcel are, are allowed only during a special event and shall be reviewed and approved on a case-by-case basis. The 50-foot separation required is waived for special events. And all applicable lo- local and state laws must be met, including returning to a commissary or similar base facility daily. Now, next we have home occupations. They're permitted in all zoning districts that allow residential housing under the following conditions. No displays of goods, products, or services visible from outside of the dwelling. No business storage or warehousing of material supplies or equipment is permitted outdoors. Storage is permitted in the principal dwelling unit or a fully enclosed accessory structure. Must be no change in the outside appearance of the building or premises or other visual, visible evidence of the conduct of a home occupation. Requirements for shipping and receiving of materials in connection with the business does not create excessive noise or traffic. Traffic and parking will not be detrimental to the neighborhood or create congestion on the street. And then no on-premise retail sales of goods not produced on the site may occur, except incidental retail sales may be permitted. So example we put here is if somebody has their own beauty shop there, they can sell some hair products that they, uh, they like to market. No more than two persons, not a resident on the premises, may be employed in connection with the home occupation. And then the use may not create objectionable noise, fumes, odor, dust, or electrical interference. And not more than 25% of the total gross floor area of residential buildings plus other buildings housing the home occupation or more than 1,000 square feet of gross floor area may be used for that purpose. And only vehicles used primarily as passenger vehicles may be used in connection with the home occupation. And we have parking of commercial vehicles and then parking of recreational vehicles. So in any lot, uh, one commercial vehicle may be parked on an overnight basis on private property and shall be limited to, uh, vehicles that have a gross weight of up to 10,000 pounds. No person shall park or place construction or maintenance equipment, machinery, or materials or allow the same to be parked or placed on public property, streets, and street right-ofways or upon any private property in a residential zoning district. Parking of RVs, recreational vehicles should not be deemed as a dwelling or an accessory unit in this code. RVs for dwelling purposes are not allowed on residential lots and shall be allowed only in an approved recreational vehicle park. Then we have temporary uses. So these are uses that are considered seasonal, transient. Typically are allowed on a short-term basis. So they're, a lot of times they're located on a divot that, that may be underdeveloped or not developed at all. So we require these to get administrative permits based on this code. We would require written permission from the property owner, has to have some compatibility and effect of the surrounding area. Must provide adequate access and use to off-street parking. And then meet the setback requirements for the underlying zoning district. And then here's examples, yes?
Need a space between paragraph C and D.
Anne, you're on it. I saw that and was just about to make the change live. I'll take care of it.
Thank you. So here are some examples of some temporary uses and the time allowed. Some type of carnival, circus, haunted attraction, if those ever happen again, I guess post-COVID now. Uh, maximum time would be 60 days. Construction trailers, you would allow for the duration of the construction project. Some type of religious event, uh, sometimes revivals, things like that, that, uh, travel around, maximum of 30 days. Sales offices for new residential developments, model homes, things like that, allow those for the duration of the development. Seasonal sales, where you have the firework places pop up, uh, Christmas tree areas, uh, things like that, 90 days. And then a special event held by a business industry or organization, 30 days.
Jeff, is that kind of a standard amount of time? I mean, some of those seem kind of long to me. So how do you come up with this timeframe?
They are the standard, yes. Uh, doesn't mean they necessarily have to be that way if you're not comfortable with it. I, I would say though that, uh, yeah, you know, the, maybe those things like Halloween and Christmas or fireworks are a little bit long, but you know, 60 might be a tad short too. So there's, you know, there's that.
I was thinking of the carnival and circus thing. I'm thinking, do we want to allow a carnival or circus up for 60 days in our town? And then I was also looking at, um, the seasonal sales. I mean, that's say for Christmas trees, you're talking October, November, December. That, I mean, October seems really early to me for Christmas tree sales or things. But I don't know, but anybody else have an opinion on that or is that just me?
It is a, a pro-business, um, decision to have it this long. Local businesses can benefit from it a little more. So I'll just throw that out there.
I mean, it does seem kind of like a long duration, but if, if that's what the, um, standard is, then I, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've even seen, um, some places where they do Halloween or for fall, they do pumpkins, a pumpkin patch, and then they'll also do Christmas tree sales.
Well, that makes sense to me. I, I guess I'm just thinking of a carnival sitting there for 60 days or something. Not that I've seen us that happen here, but I just, just didn't know that would be something we would want, but maybe I'm the only one then. Okay.
Well, you know, let us, um, let us see what else is out there then, Tracy. And we went with the standard there. We'll look and just see. We're happy to do that.
Just on a note, and I, I noticed it on the other table, do we, do we really need to like label them A and B? I mean, is that a little overkill?
I think you're right. That may be a little overkill, but I think if we go up, actually, no, it is referenced. Uh, if you scroll up just a little bit, Jeff, I think A and B are, are referenced, so, but we could reword that sentence. Say again?
Anne, I think you muted yourself.
Yeah.
I was saying that we, we have it on the other one of the table, the accessory uses. I mean, I, I don't know, just to me, I think, you know, if you have a table, you kind of know what column A and B is. I don't know if you necessarily need to identify it as that, to me.
Okay, I can, and I thought about that as, as I was putting this in. Uh, it was, it was holdover language, having the column A and column B in the sentence prior. But if I reword that sentence, then I can take out the A and B. That seems like that would be fine and, and.
The other thing, the other thing is the accessory use table, which is on page 62. It's kind of the same thing. You know, that's, but that's just me, but.
No, I, I agree. I, um, I can easily fix that.
Well, you know, as, as we've said many times, we, and that's why we're going through this, this slog of a process. We want each of you to, to put your stamp on it and want you to be, uh, want it to be what you want it to be. And so that means, you know, whether it's a big issue or a small issue, so that's, that's part of it. So absolutely.
Yeah, especially when it's something that I almost changed on my own and just left in there. Uh, just partly because it was quicker to not make the change and I felt like it was okay. But I think you're right. I think it would make it more consistent with the rest of the document.
Well, you need to look through all the tables and do that. And if you want to on that like header line or that header, header roll, you could always just shade it slightly or something if you want to emphasize it or bold the text.
I'll give it a more consist, I'll give it the more consistent look. Um, as you can see, the resolution is slightly, i- is not quite as good as some of the others. The others I had to hand create. Um, I had to go through a process to do it. And I, on some of them, I skipped that process, but, uh, this was obviously one of those and I can go back and make it look much more like the rest. So I will do it. Good attention to detail.
So now we get to a real fun spot, the table of permitted uses. So this is one of the big, uh, the big, medias parts of the code. So, you know, this is something that we use on a, a daily basis, sometimes on an hourly basis. So one thing want to point out that in a little bit of the description before I go to the Excel spreadsheet. So what we say here is that if a use is not listed as a permitted or special use, then it shall be presumed to be prohibited. But the zoning administrator shall make the determination if a use not listed in the table can reasonably be interpreted to fit into a listed use category. That's pretty, uh, pretty standard stuff in most, um, most zoning codes. So uses that are identified as permitted are listed with a P. And uses that are identified as a special use are listed with an S. If the use has a definition, it's listed in chapter 13. And we also get assistance from what's called a NEX code. It's the North America Industrial Classification Codes. Took the place of the old SIC code, Standard Industrial Classification Code. So if we need more clarification on what, what a use might entail, we would refer to that, that code to see if it fits within that definition. So it's, it's used to define a said use that is considered to be similar. And then if we have the SR denoted on there, that means that it has special requirements, which is a section that follows the table of permitted uses.
Jeff?
Yep.
On that second paragraph, which says uses identified as permitted, I, I wrote special use definition and I kind of have, what's the process?
The process is in chapter three, which we'll, we'll get to at another time. But I mean, just to, to, to give you the, the quick down and dirty on it, the special use process is, uh, requires. It's a quasi judicial process.
You don't need to explain the process, but I didn't know if we should put some sort of, something here to send people or, or state what that process was or reference to, see chapter three for the process. Or maybe if you want to highlight permitted and special use, like bold those two words.
Okay.
Emphasize them, but, but I wrote here like, so if we, if we put this here and somebody wants to ask what the definition is or what that process is, should we put a reference on that paragraph to refer them back to where they would find that information? Maybe that's what I was, what I wrote for myself. I'm not.
We can do that. Reference chapter three. Easy enough. So, and here's that same description here, the, basically the same thing that I just said, uh, a moment ago, that's written in text. Of course, we have use P as permitted, S as special use. So one thing I'll mention right out of the gate, uh, process-wise too, that's found in chapter three, is that any of these that have an S here, you can preclude having to get a special use by doing a conditional zoning district instead. Which is what we would encourage most anybody to do. But you still need to have the option of having special use permits in some places. Like for example, if you have some type of commercial use that requires a special use and they want to locate into a leasable space here in the food line shopping center, you would want to allow them the ability to just get that special use permit and not have to conditionally zone the whole parcel to be able to locate that one business there. But if you have somebody that wants to, um, open up a shopping center, a larger scale shopping center, we would encourage them to do a conditional zoning district so that they wouldn't have to come back at a later date and get a special use permit if some use would, would require that. So going through here, we have them divided up into the use categories. First is residential. So the single-family attached dwelling, i.e. townhomes, it's a permitted use by right in R4. A permitted use by right in neighborhood center, but it would require a special use permit in the employment center. So i.e., it would require board approval in the employment center area. Cottage dwelling is a special use in R4 and the neighborhood center. So anywhere where cottage dwellings would be allowed, they would require board approval. Single-family detached dwellings allowed, where you would think they would be in the R1, R3, and R4 permitted uses by right. A dwelling or duplex dwelling is a permitted use by right in R4 and in the neighborhood center district. And then tries and quadplexes, they're only a permitted use in the neighborhood center. They're not permitted anywhere else. And you see for each of these, there is an SR here. So each of them have some special requirements that you find in the next section. So anybody that wanted to locate a cottage dwelling or some type of cottage dwelling, uh, development, they would only be allowed to do that as a special use in the R4 neighborhood center. And they would have to meet all of the special requirements that would be applicable to, to their development. So that's what that means. That's how we use this chart. When somebody calls us or emails us or comes in and says, I want to do, I want to do cottage homes on a property off of, of Blythe Mill. We say, well, okay, that property off of Blythe Mill is zoned R3. So sorry, you cannot do that there. Okay, how about a few parcels down where it's zoned R4? Okay, yes, you can do that there, but it requires special use permit approval. You would have to go through the special use permit, public hearing process, site plan review, board approval, and either do it through the special use permit process or the conditional zoning process. Manufactured homes, they're allowed in R1, R3, R4, and neighborhood center, but only if they're within the manufactured home overlay district, as we discussed before. That's the only places where they're allowed. And then multifamily dwellings. Permitted use in Main Street, Town Center, and Neighborhood Center. And remember, they're only allowed on top of ground floor retailer office. Required special use permit if they locate it from the ground up in employment center. So we have family care homes, permitted uses in R1, R3, and R4. Live work units, we would want to encourage those in our more compact commercial areas such as Neighborhood Center and then in Main Street or, uh, Town Center. And here we finally got into tiny home park. It's been mentioned that a couple of times. So we have some special requirements there and, and it specifies what a tiny home park is and how it can be developed. So we have some special requirements there and, and it specifies what a tiny home park is and how it can be developed out. That would be special use approval in the R three or R four zoning district would be the only two places that would be allowed. So here.
Jeff?
I mentioned the NEX code. You can see for some of these, for further reference, you can refer to that NEX code. Yes, Anne?
Um, family care homes, would that be sort of like a, like a rehab step down type home? Or like a halfway house or like a, like a residential home for if people were coming out of like residential treat, you know, like, uh, like a residential treatment house home?
It is, it is not a halfway house. Uh, I forgot, we referenced the North Carolina statute for that. But it, it's not a halfway house or anything like that, uh, where you'd have somebody that's, um, that's, uh, you know, leaving prison and trying to adjust themselves to, back to society or anything like that. A, um, family care home would, would typically be some type of, um, of, uh, minor social assistance, thing like that. Those typical type uses.
What about if it was someone coming from drug rehab and they were going to live in a residential facility to acclimate back into society or something like that? Or, or do we have something that would address anything like that?
We have that in social, social assistance, which is special use in the neighborhood center and then corridor commercial permitted use.
So, so nothing like that would be located in a residential area?
No. So then we have civic and institutional uses. Animal shelter. It's only allowed as a special use in corridor commercial. Cemeteries, crematories, mausoleums. Permitted in R one, R three, R four and corridor commercial. A lot of times you will find them, uh, off of main corridors for some of your larger memorial gardens. Other times you usually find them kind of embedded in around residential areas.
Why would those be in residential areas or crematory?
Well, they are typically.
It's because they're, they can be part of a church and a church could be located in a residential area.
That's right.
But you know, with that said, do we need to separate that a little bit more?
Well, crematories is where they would.
We could. What are you thinking?
Well, I just, you know, don't know that I'd want a cemetery or a mausoleum or crematory, uh, next to my house.
The objection is it's not so much the cemetery or the mausoleums, but a crematory where they would be disposing of bodies and, and burning. Like that doesn't seem like it'd be appropriate in a residential neighborhood.
Yeah, I, I, that's a very good point. I don't know if that's, if the definition could specify. Or maybe we need to come up with a separate definition for, uh, places where, where ashes can be interned versus where bodies would be, you know, processed for that.
I think it's worth a revisit.
Yeah.
Let's see what we got here. Tombstones, columbariums, crypts, monuments shall be located a minimum of twenty feet from side or rear lot line unless greater setbacks and terrace should not be used for the preparation of the bombing of bodies or the cremation of bodies. Setback for cemetery shall be measured from the nearest. Okay, yep, we'll take that out. We'll revisit that.
I know that, um, well, it depends on, um, I'm not sure in the difference between a mausoleum and a crematory in this sense. But, um, if, say that you have a situation where you have a church that is located in a residential area and they erect, usually these crematories, as I understand, they are like a walled structure. And so it would just, it basically just looks like a wall.
That's the mausoleum.
That's the mausoleum. Okay. So the crematories always include, that's what I'm saying. I'm not clear on the definitions. It would always include processing as well, for lack of a better term.
Well, maus- mausoleums would be more like an above ground structure where they would house the remains. Whereas a crematory is how they, they, um, I guess would prepare the body. So much like if you have a funeral home where they would embalm or preserve it. I mean, crematories, they basically burn things to ashes. So, you know, I would think.
Crematory.
The byproduct, byproduct of that, I mean, would you really want any of that in a residential neighborhood?
No. I was just going to suggest, could you move crematory down to funeral home there at, on line twenty six?
Yep, that's, uh, that's exactly what my next thought process was. I think that's what we should do.
Well, I know there's a lot of historic cemeteries and mausoleums that are, are kind of historic, that are kind of weaved and woven through communities. So I don't necessarily, I'm not, that I don't have a problem with, but it's just sort of the crematory.
Let's do some end time changing here.
Oh, end time. I thought you said end time.
Hopefully not, just end time. Since this, this is the master copy. Okay, so we got that as permitted in corridor commercial. And now we just have cemeteries and mausoleums. No, no burning. Does that look good?
Looks good.
I think you'd need to put the green back on, uh, definitions. Almost.
There we go. Okay. All right. So then we have civic, social and fraternal organizations. You know, these are, you know, any of your, you know, VA, um, any, any, anything like that. Masonic lodges, things of that sort permitted in, um, in our non-residential residential areas. A community center that would be private, not a public one in our non-residential or mixed use area. Convention center, visitors bureau. Yes.
I'm sorry, uh, would it be possible to put a civic, social, fraternal and veteran organization?
There we go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Conventioner center and visitors bureau, we have in Town Center, Corridor Commercial and Employment Center. A daycare center for children or adults. We have them permitted in our non-residential and mixed use zoning district. And if somebody wanted to do that in a residential area, they would have to get special use permit approval, i.e. board approval. Um, and of course, this, this, uh, one thing you have to keep in mind is the state definition for daycares. And you know, they can have, anybody in any house can have a small number of children and look after those children. But I think the number is eight, if I remember correct, that, uh, if you have eight or more, um, you're considered than a daycare. Dormitories would be a special use in corridor, commercial and employment center. An event center such as a wedding venue, something of that sort. Permitted in our mixed use and non-residential area. And then it would require a special use permit or conditional zoning in our suburban residential zones. So, and here's our adjustment to funeral homes and crematories. And then government buildings and facilities would be permitted in all zoning districts as usual. Hospital permitted use in corridor, commercial and employment center.
Jeff, would that also pertain to like maybe an ambulatory surgical center? Or I know like we have the standalone emergency room. Is that addressed somewhere?
Uh, like, um, urgent cares and, and things like that.
Even if they want to have outpatient surgery centers.
That is, that's, um, that, we would consider that a hospital. I don't think we have that listed as another use.
Okay.
We've got libraries, uh, private libraries being non-residential or mixed use. Museums, art galleries in our non-residential and mixed use zoning areas. Nursing home and assisted living. So we've got that permitted in the neighborhood center and in corridor, commercial. Also, we would allow it as a special use in the town center. But then sometimes you see them kind of out in the hinterland every now and then. And we would allow that only as a special use if it was out somewhere in one of our, our one zones. Parks, you want to allow those anywhere and everywhere. Performing arts companies and studios permitted use in all of our non-residential and mixed use, i.e. neighborhood center zoning district. Preschools and neighborhood center corridor, commercial and employment center. And special use would be required for any of our residential zoning districts. And we're not allowing those in the main street or town center zone districts. Religious institutions, they're allowed everywhere except for the employment center zoning district. The idea behind that is we want to make sure that we have, uh, every bit of, of that available for our tax base. And so if, um, if we have any religious institutions that locate in that, then that certainly takes away from our opportunities for tax base within that area. So that's the thought process there. A retirement community, special use permit in R three, R four and neighborhood center. Schools, primary, secondary, so that is, uh, elementary schools and high schools. Their permitted use everywhere but our downtown core, i.e. Main Street District. So a technical and trade school would be allowed in our town center, neighborhood center, corridor, commercial and employment center is a permitted use by right. A university or college would be allowed in the same town center, neighborhood center, corridor, commercial and employment center.
Hey Jeff, um, why would dormitories not be the same as university or colleges?
Dormitory would be an accessory use as part of the university. This, the, the definition of this dormitory would be some type of, um, of a larger scale private need. Like if they needed to house, uh, a number of, uh, people working there. That's the difference.
Okay, so if, if under a school, university or college, a regular dormitory for those would apply to that same. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, it would. We would not, we would not want to discourage dormitories from being on any. So whenever Waxaw University is created, we definitely want to make sure that, uh, they have the ability to have students living there.
Okay.
In a post code.
We may want to, um, to look at the definitions in chapter thirteen and just shore that up, make sure.
Yeah, we'll double check that though, since you brought it up. So we'll make note of that. And you know, Blair's doing this real time and, and Elisa's valiantly, uh, we had everything that you said yesterday. We've already compiled and I guess you can't see it very well and I'm flashing it up here. But, uh, we're going to digest all this tomorrow. So let's see here, retirement communities in R three, R four and neighborhood center. I think already went over those. So now we're down to, um, social assistance. As we talked about in neighborhood centers, a special use and corridor, commercial permitted use. And if we ever get the Waxaw Zoo, that would be a special use in corridor, commercial. Or if it was out, uh, in the outskirts, special use in R one. Professional office and business services, animal hospital and boarding. Permitted uses in Town Center and Corridor Commercial only. Animal kennel is a special use in corridor, commercial. An automobile towing wrecker would only be located in corridor, commercial and only as a special use. So if somebody wanted to come and do that, they would require a board review. Banks and financial services are permitted uses by right in all of our non-residential and neighborhood center district. General office is the same. So an HVAC electricity and plumbing service, sales and service would be permitted use in corridor, commercial and employment center. Medical offices and services. So you know, this, that's a lot of catchall. Could be urgent care, could be a whole lot of different things permitted use in our non-residential and neighborhood center. A pest control service would only be allowed in corridor, commercial as a permitted use. Yes.
Medical offices and services, like, maybe you want to check the definition. Let's say it's an urgent care. Would we really want an urgent care located in our main street?
Okay.
I mean, you know, if you were originally, when we talked about under the hospitals, but I, I think where it says and services, let's say we had a surgical center, would you want them really located on our main street? Do we need to tease that definition out a little?
We can break that up, make sure that we get some of those things like, um, you know, outpatient surgeries, uh, urgent cares, things like that. Out of the main street and town center. Happy to do that. We got radio and TV studio. Permitted use in the employment center district and a special use in town center. So ESPN radio ever wanted to locate a satellite campus down in Waxaw, that's how they could do it. Cause I know they're up in Charlotte. Retail, commercial and entertainment, ABC store and town center, neighborhood center and corridor, commercial. Adult establishment. Now this is always a fun one. So state law says that you have to allow them somewhere. The, um, the key word there being somewhere. So we have some special requirements in the next section. And so, you know, I think we're, we're fine with what we're doing there. You can do it one of two different ways. You could limit it by, uh, distance requirements. Certain distance from parks, from churches and schools, which is what we do. Or you can create your own red light district, which is the other way to do that. We've chosen not to do that. But it is only allowed as a special use in the corridor, commercial. So anybody that proposed to do that would come before the board for a review.
Jeff?
Yes.
We're kind of talking about this. What if, um, what if they ever legalized marijuana and they wanted to put a dispensary someplace? How, how would that be coded and where would that go?
I believe we have that accounted for coming up.
Okay.
Animal grooming. Permitted uses in all of our commercial and neighborhood center. Art gallery, studio, the same. An auction house would only be allowed in corridor, commercial. So, and here's another one that, uh, we wanted to, to create great. So, and here's another one that we wanted to create great mind and care to. Any auto, truck, boat, motorcycle, RV cells and dealerships. So if anybody wants to locate a CarMax down here, it requires a special use of permit or conditional zoning approval by the board. So anything, no matter what it is, that would require approval from the board. Automobile body shop, the same. So like a caliber collision, for example, you know, like the county approved, they went through a special use permit process across the street from the police department. Auto detailing would be a permitted use in corridor, commercial, and employment center. Automobile parts and supplies permitted use in town center and corridor, commercial. Automobile rental, like an enterprise, permitted use in corridor, commercial. Automobile vehicle and repair service, so something like a Valvoline, permitted use by right in the corridor, commercial. Automobile towing and wrecker service, though, would be a special use in the corridor, commercial, so it would require board approval. Bakery would be a permitted use by right in all commercial and neighborhood center zoning districts. A barber and salon would be in Main Street, Town Center, Neighborhood Center, and Corridor, Commercial. A beer and wine shop would be the same. Bed and breakfast establishment, so permitted use by right in R1 and R4, and a permitted use by right in Neighborhood Center. And it would be a special use in the main street or town center. A brewery.
Can I stop you for one second on the bed and breakfast? Is this, I was just noticing in the definition part on that one, where it says meals shall be served to resident guests only. I know that a lot of bed and breakfasts allow outside people to come into their restaurants, if they have a full-service restaurant in there. So I, that was just something that I thought, didn't know if we needed to change. Or what the reasoning was for restricting that.
An overnight lodging business where the owner of the business resides in the structure, or breakfast meal is typically provided to overnight guests.
In the definition that I have in, in my book, it says meals shall be served to resident guests only. So I was wondering, what if a bed and breakfast had a restaurant in it that allows outside people to come into? Is that, would that just be fall-under restaurant instead of bed and breakfast?
Yeah, it seems like that would be classified as a restaurant in that point, in that case, or at least the way we have it set up now.
Okay.
Well, I think if I remember right, we originally had that in the, in there, but we struck it out because it's not in the latest, you know, and our intention was not to not allow people to, you know, if somebody just wanted to go eat there. But you typically require that as a rest, that would typically be classified as a restaurant, but, I mean, I.
So it doesn't, so it would be separated from the bed and breakfast as, as far as uses go, or, I guess that's what I'm confused on.
Well, if, if they wanted to also, you know, have, be a restaurant, then we would also look at them from that perspective and how they would be allowed as a restaurant use.
Okay.
Then we've got brewery, distillery, and whiterie that's primary, primarily retail. So that would be, you know, like your tap house that's here now. Those are permitted use by right in Main Street, Town Center, and Corridor, Commercial. Bicycle sales and service, the same. Bookstore, the same. Butcher shop, the same. Car wash is a permitted use only in corridor, commercial. Clothing and apparel store is in our MSTC, Neighborhood Center, Corridor, Commercial is permitted use by right. Coffee, tea, and juice shop, the same. And so here is what we'll talk about a little bit again. So, yes.
Like at the coffee, tea, or juice shop, what about if, if, well, maybe this would be part of a master plan, but in an employment center, what if they would want like, they had a coffee shop for, you know, or, or a restaurant or something like that, if they want to go serve the business workers or things?
So we have that accounted for in the accessory use, but I suppose you're, you're thinking, and it's not a bad thought, if somebody wanted to locate, you know, maybe carve out a small little out parcel there and have that, that's not a bad idea.
Well, I was just sort of thinking like that, like if you went up to, I know Ballantyne area, where you have all the office buildings and parks, that, you know, maybe if there was like a little structure, if they want to stop and get a cup of coffee, or, I don't know, you know what I mean?
That's a good suggestion.
Well, in addition to that, you look at the footprint of Red Ventures over there, where they are, they have a restaurant inside the building for the employees, but that's, you know, again, another use. But that one is actually subbed out to the guys who run Elio's Notch and that group.
Well, and then we have commercial development, under 10,000 square feet, 10,000 to 60,000 square feet, and then 60,001 and above. So, you know, let's say somebody comes in and they want to do, you know, well, any use, and regardless if it's a permitted use by right, if their square footage falls within the 10,000 to 60,000 square foot, and they're located in the neighborhood center, they have to get a special use permit. If it's above 60,000 square feet, they have to get a special use permit in the Main Street, Town Center, and Corridor, Commercial. So the thought process, again, was larger commercial projects. We anticipated that the board would want additional review of the larger-scale projects, and so that's why we did it that way. Then we've got convenience stores with fuel as a permitted use in corridor, commercial, and a special use in employment center. And then without fuel, permitted use in Main Street, Town Center, Neighborhood Center, Corridor, Commercial, and a special use in employment center. Drugstore, we've got permitted use in MSTC, NC, and CC. Dry cleaning in Town Center, Neighborhood Center, and Corridor, Commercial. Electronic gaming or sweepstakes only as a special use in corridor, commercial. Flea market, the same, only a special use in corridor, commercial. Florist is a permitted use in Main Street, Town Center, Neighborhood Center, and Corridor, Commercial. And a gas station, so now that's not a convenience store. It's just like one of those full-service type gas stations, which really rarely exist anymore. Special use in corridor, commercial, and employment center. Grocery stores in Main Street, Town Center, Neighborhood Center, and Corridor, Commercial. And a gun and ammo shop, permitted use in corridor, commercial. Hotel, we allow that as a permitted use in Town Center and Corridor, Commercial, but a special use in Main Street or Employment Center. Ice cream shop, permitted use in MS, Town Center, Neighborhood Center, Corridor, Commercial. So indoor gaming such as arcade, billiards, bowling alleys, things like that would be in all of our non-residential and mixed-use zoning district. Laundromat, Town Center, Neighborhood Center, Corridor, Commercial. Medical equipment, Town Center and Corridor, Commercial. Nightclub, the same. Pawn shops, the same. Personal care services like nail salons, things like that, MSTC, Neighborhood Center, Corridor, Commercial. Pet stores, the same. Postal service store would be Town Center, Neighborhood Center, Corridor, Commercial, and Employment Center. Then a rental center, like one of those rental center-type places, a permitted use in corridor, commercial. Restaurant with drive-through, permitted use in corridor, commercial only. Restaurant with no drive-through is permitted in MSTC, Neighborhood Center, Corridor, Commercial, and then a special use in Employment Center. Self-storage permitted use in corridor, commercial. Smoke and tobacco shop, permitted use in MSTC and C, Corridor, Commercial. Tap rooms, tasting rooms, the same. Tattoos. Town Center, Neighborhood Center, Corridor, Commercial. Indoor theater, MS, Town Center, Corridor, Commercial. And then an outdoor theater, like a drive-in type place, would only be allowed as a special use in corridor, commercial.
Jeff, I'm going to.
And we are, oh, probably a little bit more than halfway through the table of permitted uses, so. Shall we call it?
We probably should due to some people's schedules, including mine, but I think it's a great exercise. And I'm not being too facetious when I say this, I don't care how long it takes, but it's just a great exercise to go through with you guys and to allow us to ask the questions as well, to understand your thinking behind some of the decisions. So thank you for that, Blair Madison, Lisa, Jeff, and certainly, that's a lot of work. But you all can see the difference between this and what we currently have. Big difference, a lot of work. So Jeffrey, thank you very much for being here.
We appreciate you as well.
So, anyway, with this, unless there's any other comments relative to what we've just talked about, everyone, gonna go again by acclamation on our ability to take a motion to close, so.
Can I jump in here real quick? Nice, I want to make sure our next scheduled times for review are December 1st and December 2nd. So we still have not much left of chapter four, but we still have chapter five. My guess is, is that we'll start going quicker once we get out of this chapter four. That's, this is the meat of everything. So why don't we go ahead and assign reading for December 1st and 2nd for chapters seven and chapters eight that deal with our streets, connectivity, and parking, and landscaping standards?
All right, that will, that'll work, I think, with everybody. Any comments? Very good, we will be ready again.
So, again, I greatly appreciate your willingness to just go through this, this, this thoroughly. As I've said before, I want to make sure that you understand what this is, and I really appreciate all of your very good comments.
All right, then, so any other questions at all? Any hands up there? No one? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By acclamation, any opposition, say, or any acclamation to approve, just say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're good. Any opposition? Negative. We're gone. Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you.
Hit the button by mistake.